I'm not hearing anyone. Is that just because it's quiet or I'm having trouble?
Can you hear me? I can hear you. Okay.
Thank you. Looks like the mayor's having some trouble getting on.
Yeah, I'll text him here in a minute if he doesn't get on.
Sometimes you have to go through a number of those invites and it gets a little bit convoluted. You may be having that issue.
Tim, could you text him that I think his invite probably came in on April thirteenth?
Just we sent invites to everyone. So if you could just hold one more second. Thank you. By the way, we are recording. So thank you.
All right, Eric, everyone's here. My apology for technical difficulties, couldn't find the invite for this last meeting and apologize for the public for being a few minutes late. The last meeting ran over a little bit, but it was important city business. I think we're, are we waiting for one more person?
No, well, Councilmember Michael will not be able to attend this. She just informed me.
Okay, all right. Let's proceed then. My name again is Mike Peterson, Mayor of City Cotwood Heights. It's Tuesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. It's a little bit after seven PM. Again, my apologies for being a little bit late because of our previous meeting. I need to excuse Councilmember Bruce, who was traveling and Councilor Michael, who was also traveling at this time and will not be in attendance at this business meeting. Because this meeting is held virtually, I have a determination I had to read into the record and that determination states that according to Utah Code annotated fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven four, the city's mayor as the chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meetings of those bodies on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID nineteen coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes the substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, we are meeting virtually. With that, we will now move to a pledge of allegiance and I would like to ask Councilmember Peterson, would you please lead us in a pledge at this time?
Certainly, Mayor.
On your bad knee.
I pledge allegiance to the United States. To the republic.
For which it stands. One nation under God.
Through God.
Indefensible.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that very much. The next item is the acknowledgement, which is pursuant to proclamation twenty twenty dash thirteen, where the city recognizes each April as a child abuse awareness month, according to the Utah Children's Justice Center, Utah's Division of Child and Family Services, who has received forty thousand three hundred sixty-five reports of child abuse and neglect in twenty twenty. And each year at this time, we recognize this month as child abuse awareness month and encourage our constituents and everyone to be aware of this awareness month and appreciate the opportunity to pride this, provide this information through our council. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments and I'd like to preface this item on the agenda with an encouragement to all those who are wanting to speak to the city council, to encourage that the responses or the comments be civil, with not having personal attacks. Makes for a more conducive and productive meeting and allows us to focus on the importance of your issue without getting too emotional. So we appreciate that. We'd also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And with that being said, Paula, do we have anybody who's signed up for public comments?
I believe Tim has a public comment that was sent to him before five o'clock today, Mayor.
I thought you said Tim Halbach had one.
Yeah, Paula, do you want to just mention that? This was from, I believe, Deborah Case. It was related to ranked choice voting. And we sent that, we sent that to the council and so just want to read that into the record that Deborah Case commented on that. So you'll have, you have copies and it's part of the record.
We got that love, Tim Halbach.
Tim, welcome again.
Yep. Hey, always good. Hey, and if Tim Tingey needs some help with that stuff, hey, no problem. I get plenty of free time.
I just assumed it was you the first one usually.
Yeah, exactly. Just have two things. One, so I went to the, the rec center, took my new girlfriend, but we didn't work out. On a serious note, the ranked voting, I really liked the concept and I really appreciate Councilman Bracken's taken pretty much two hours last night, two and a half hours to go over a lot of stuff. So that was really good. But it is fresh. It is the first time for the county to be doing this. So my suggestion would be, why don't we just sit out one cycle or if we don't want to set out a cycle, at least have some kind of practice, like a practice ballot or something, or seminars to educate people. I mean, I'm fairly well educated and it took me a little while to catch on how the voting added up in the second round and third round and fourth round and that kind of thing. So I think some education and, you know, maybe to sit it out for one, one cycle would be a good idea. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate those comments as always. Paula, do we have someone else who would like to comment to the city council?
I have Alan Biro. I think it's.
Well, Ellen Burrell. Yeah. Hi, Ellen. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Good evening, everyone. So I also am wanting to comment on ranked choice voting. I am so glad that the city council has been in favor of it in the past. And I understand that you'll be bringing that to the vote again to possibly apply to the county to use it in this year's election. And from everything I can understand about ranked choice voting, I am very much in favor of it. It sounds like it will be positive for the those that are running for given office, it will help to streamline things and make less expensive in many ways for them to make a run for office. And I also think it will be good in the long run for the voters. We'll, we will be able to vote for the candidates as, as we see the best candidates in, in first, second, third, et cetera. So so I just wanted to voice that I am again so pleased that the council is gonna hopefully move this ahead. I would like to see it definitely move into place for twenty twenty-one. I understand that this year Sandy City is going to do ranked choice voting and why not have Cotwood Heights be right there on the front line as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Appreciate that comment. I understand Sandy City has on their agenda tonight. So be interested to hear if they took action. Yeah. Paula, do you have someone else?
I have Ken Gardner.
Ken, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for all the good work you do. Thank you, Tim Tingey. I wanted to put my vote in for ranked choice voting. I think it's actually a benefit to voters. More voters will actually get their first or second choice in and they'll feel more connected and more likely to vote next time. It's a great way to engage the youth. There was some discussion about how our voters are typically older. I think it's a great thing. Please put it in for twenty twenty-one. Couple other comments. The artwork, kudos, looks great. One way to minimize vandalism is to put light on it at night. That was not discussed in your work session. And finally, the traffic intersection up at the gravel pit. The thing is, I don't agree that that's the safest option. Talking to the traffic engineer, they can do really intensive traffic studies, including the south build. And if they do that, I think that intersection is going to get overwhelmed. And when people are putting on a curve and they're trying to go around the curve, they're less likely to pay attention to what's coming out of that intersection. So I, I would urge you guys to go to more of a T-intersection, whether you do through lanes, right turn off Wasatch back, back to it. You know, there's, there's different configurations. I didn't see all four of them that you looked at last time, but please look at that carefully. I don't think it's safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. And thank you for looking at the multiple issues. That's always helpful. Appreciate it. Paula, do you have someone else?
Yes, sir. I have Brendan Dodge.
Brendan, welcome. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Excellent. Thanks for having me back. I appreciate all the guys, all the work that all of you do as our city council and mayor. Thank you. I would also like to chime in a little bit about ranked choice voting. The labor union I belong to has been doing ranked choice voting for for its E-board for a long time. I think it's a very good system. I believe the last time I spoke to the city council, we talked about division and diversity in our city and how things sometimes get a little bit out of hand and we when each side is too far one way or the other. I think ranked choice voting is a very good solution to that, right? You kind of, you find some middle ground with candidates that more people are happy. So I was really excited to see that on your agenda and I'm very much a proponent of it. I think it'd be a very good thing for our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Brendan, and appreciate your comments on that subject. Paula, someone else?
No, Mayor, there's no one else.
Wait just a minute, just in case.
I have Michael Hanson.
Ah, Mike who?
Hanson.
I thought you said handsome.
That too.
Sometimes.
All right, welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How you guys doing?
Great.
Hey, I want to put a thank you out for Councilman Bracken and spending as much time that he has in his research and details around ranked choice voting. I am still kind of in the air personally, but that's not really what I'm here to talk about tonight. And also, it was great, Scott, that you were able to give citizens your time and a lot of it last night, as Tim mentioned a little earlier. Thing I want to talk about really quickly and I'll just keep it really short was last week during, or not last week, but last business session, Dan Bartlett, Lieutenant Bartlett was doing his presentation and it's kind of like there was a bomb thrown in the, in the room when a study was brought up that was done by SafeWise and Safe Cities in Utah. Rebecca Edwards published that back in March ninth, ninth of twenty-one. And the concern was that was brought up there was that our city ranked number twenty-six out of three hundred and six cities in the, in the state. And I, it's just interesting. I think you should vet information before it gets put out into public media like that. I took the liberty just to go in and look that over a little bit and I, I noticed that in our county, we did not have a top ten on that list. If we took just the cities out of the county on that list, number one would be South Jordan, two Draper, three Cottonwood Heights, four Sandy, our neighbor, five West Jordan, six West Valley City, seven Murray, number eight Salt Lake City. And some of the cities that are our neighbors weren't even on the ranking. Let's look at Holiday, Midvale, Mill Creek, no mention of on the list. They didn't meet the top thirty-five. So it just, it just kind of struck me odd that it was, it kind of seemed like this was a study that was thrown into something that, that really hadn't been vetted. I don't think there's a lot of relevance to how it affects us in our own county. And it, it bothered me enough to want to at least look into it and, and hope that there could be a little bit more put out before we decide to start just throwing things out in, in public like that. I'd love to hear some comments back sometime down the road. Thanks for all you do, guys. I appreciate it very much. And it's good to see you all on the screen. You all look handsome tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate those comments and I really appreciate the clarification on the safe city issue. That was my assumption and my experience is that topic's been brought up in, in years past and but again, every councilor has a right to say an opinion and I appreciate you providing that clarification and and especially what it shows us in the top three within the valley itself. I think that's, that's very positive. I know what the UFA and other organizations, whenever you're in the top three, that's what we all strive for. So thank you for that clarification and thanks to our public safety people for keeping us in the top three in the valley. That's excellent. Okay, Paula, do you have some, someone else?
No, sir. I don't see any raised hands.
All right. Right.
Mayor, if it's okay, might I just interject, considering the events of the day that I, I hope that people will respect the process. I think there's a lot of support for our police. And I think I would hope that citywide, countywide and statewide, we as Utahns would show that we respect the processes and what's going on nationally as well as locally and express our opinions peacefully.
I think, you know, that's very appropriate. It's public comment period and you're a citizen. So that's a very valid public comment. All right, any other comments? Again, thank you for those. We'll move on now to, or out of citizen comments, which that was to a public comment. Because we really would like to hear constituents' feelings as we go through this process of review and application for the gravel pit development. So Mike Johnson, before we open up to public comment on the gravel pit development, I'll let you go ahead and introduce that and then we'll take that public comment.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to be as brief as I can here, but if, if I go too fast for anyone listening, we have a project webpage that has all, all of this information on it and I am always happy to meet and sit down and take any questions or comments from anybody during normal business hours as well. So I, I, I think many in the city by now are familiar with this development application. It's been in its process for quite a while. So, so I'll give a quick overview of, of when we received the application and where it's been from here. And then where it goes. So I'll just highlight a few things here. August twenty nineteen is when the full complete application was formally submitted and we began our internal review of this project. And, and the next slide is a summary of what the project is actually proposing. So I'll get there. The Architecture Review Commission reviewed this, this development proposal and it's actually a rezone proposal in January, February, April and May at, at four different meetings and ended up making a unanimous recommendation of approval under their purview, which is site, site design, landscaping, you know, building architecture and style and, you know, that kind of thing, the aesthetics and, and the way the site works as an overall project. Then July through October, over the course of six meetings, the planning commission considered this item, held a public hearing for six meetings. We received well over a hundred comments, probably close to two hundred public comments on that and got a lot of good feedback through that process. After deliberation and requests of the applicant and, you know, tweaks and revisions, the planning commission ended up recommending approval of this item five to one to the city council. And as this is a rezone, it's a legislative item, so it comes to city council for consideration, for final consideration. And you'll remember, built into this process in December, December through February, the council considered and ended up approving an amendment to the Affordable Housing Provision in the PDD, which will apply in this project. This has been discussed in two meetings with Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee for feedback. And then that brings us to where we are now, not to mention the numerous council work sessions we've discussed this project in. Here's a rough roadmap. This is what was laid out at, at the last work session, but so, so everyone is aware of, of kind of the steps we anticipate being left. Again, this is estimated, but, but this is kind of what's left in the project in our opinion. Tonight, we talked about the project in the work session. We're taking public comment. We are also scheduled to take public comment on May fourth. The notices we sent out included notice of public comment both tonight and at the next meeting and on May fourth. And then in that May fourth work session, we're going to have an in-depth conversation of the sensitive lands hazards on this project. Because there, there are many here and many concerns and things that need to be mitigated. So we're going to spend some time going through that one more time. And then we move into mid-May, at which point staff will be ready to present a full decision, final decision document and package for council consideration for, for final vote.
Is that a special work session or is that actually the eighteenth?
That's probably the eighteenth. I think, I think I had that typo last time and I didn't fix it. Good catch. Thank you. That being said, here, here is the proposal and the proposal, this is a planned development district or a PDD application. What this is, is a rezone. It's a site-specific rezone. So we have an ordinance in the city right now that allows an applicant to propose a rezone and adopt a kind of a customized zoning ordinance that is only applicable and only pertains to one unique property in the city. The, the goal of the PDD ordinance is to develop a more creative approach to the development process, one that the council has more of a hand in early on, rather than the conventional development where, where the council considers the rezone and then it never comes back to the council, the planning commission takes care of the, the development application itself. This is kind of site plan and master site plan and rezone and code amendment all in one process. So what is before the council is a, a zone change on this property to PDD two, this being the second PDD application. And that, that comes along with a, a master development plan, which is what you see in front of you here and numerous other documents that show landscaping and transportation and site access and, and all kinds of things. But it's also a, a zoning text that will govern this site as the, as each phase of this project moves forward. What I want to clarify with this is a council decision on this does not mean building permits are issued and, and construction starts tomorrow. You can see this is, this is twenty acres. It's quite a large development. There's, there's many different buildings here. This will happen in phases. And each of those phases will need to come in and go through site plan approval with the Architecture Review Commission before building permits are reviewed and issued. So this is the, the step to entitle the site to apply the zone to give a council, the council a very clear idea of the types of buildings and uses, the setbacks and building heights and that kind of thing. But each phase of this project, and I believe there are six or seven different phases, will come in for very technical detailed site plan review and approval before construction begins. A few different images here that I'm going to flip through quickly. As you can see, the site is proposed to have a central road that will become a public road. East of that road tucked in to the eastern portion of the site by, by the hillside is a proposed apartment building and condominium building. Those are the tallest buildings proposed on the site. And then west of that road between the, the new road and State Route one ninety or Wasatch Boulevard there are a mix of retail uses and a hotel that are proposed. Those range from the hotel being, I think, five stories to three stories with these mixed-use buildings and then one story for everything else. And then you can see being proposed is a, a large plaza area. And then it, it's a little harder to see here, but plaza space and pedestrian space between each of the retail buildings. Additionally, a, a trail is proposed up the hillside that will connect, will be accessible to the public and will be planned to connect to the future Bonneville Shoreline Trail alignment as it develops to the east. These are some site massing renderings. This is not indicative of final architecture or design, only the mass of the buildings and, and a sense of scale of the development. This rendering was, was created at the intersection adjacent to the project by sixty-two hundred south by the existing signal there. So, so it's designed to increase in height as it steps away from Wasatch Boulevard. This, this is further away. This is kind of out in front of Porcupine Grill over on Fort Eden Boulevard. It gives you a sense of the scale from, from a little farther away. I'll zoom in a little bit there so you can see. I think what's helpful here is these, these industrial tanks, they exist today. That gives you kind of a sense of the scale of the buildings in relation to those existing pieces of equipment. And then finally, a rendering from down below on Big Cottonwood Canyon Road near the old mill building to, to show that you will see a, a little bit of the development, but a, the majority of it is hidden from view down below. And you do still see a lot of that mountain and hillside there. So here's the summary of proposed uses. Like I said, apartments and condominiums, three hundred twenty-five units in the apartments, ninety-nine condominiums. A total of fifteen percent of all of those units will be provided at an affordable rate and with the text amendment that is affordable to households earning eighty percent or less of area median income. So a great opportunity to implement affordable housing. Four different retail pads, almost twenty thousand square feet total between them, all of them being one story. A hotel with approximately hundred forty rooms, five stories. And then the two mixed-use buildings that are there in the front of the site near Wasatch Boulevard. Those are both proposed at three-story buildings, two levels of office above one level of retail. In terms of open space, a lot of that hillside behind it remains. It will have to be reclaimed and go through a, a substantial reclamation process. You know, with revegetation and hillside replacement and, and some very detailed engineering work there. And then a public trail constructed on that hillside. That's over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. It's a large portion of the site. Landscaped area, which consists of the, the middle area and, and, you know, some of the other landscape areas on the site is over two hundred thousand square feet and plaza space, which would be the spaces, the pedestrian spaces between the retail buildings is about forty thousand square feet. Altogether, I, I believe that's about fifty, fifty-five to, to sixty percent of the total acreage of the site. So good balance of you know, transportation infrastructure and buildings with landscaping and open space and plazas. The site plan is, is helpful, a helpful representation of some of the challenges with the site. There are steep slopes, obviously, on the east side. All the red areas are fault lines and fault setback areas. And then the big blue line that comes diagonally across the site is a, a waterline easement that's owned by Metropolitan Water District. That's their large kind of transmission level waterline that runs through this site and south through Cottonwood Heights. And then as mentioned in the work session, as, as we've continued working with Holiday, there's been a minor modification to the, the proposed intersection to the site. And that really allows the existing Wasatch Boulevard in, into Holiday City to remain largely un, unmodified and creates And creates a, a stop-controlled intersection for traffic leaving the new project site. So the traffic will, will be a free flow from, to and from um. Holidays Wasatch Boulevard to UDOT's Wasatch Boulevard, State Route one ninety. And then project leave, or traffic leaving the project will be stop-controlled. This will, this full design of this will be done as part of phase one, so this is. Um, you know, this is indicative of the alignment and that, that is being pursued now. Uh, we feel it works better than the kind of the uh. The uh resolution we had reached with the previous uh um intersection configuration, given Holiday City's concerns and our desire to, to work with them. We feel um, given the concerns, given um what they were in favor of and what they were opposed to, that this was the, the. The safest um solution that um is acceptable to city staff. To Cottonwood Heights, to the project uh app- applicant and developer, but also to Holiday City and, and the constituents that, that live um adjacent to the north. Um, I'll, I'll reiterate, just based on a public comment, we just heard that um. As this future property to the south, the larger portion of the gravel pit develops. Uh, we will revisit uh this, this intersection uh at that time to assess whether. Changes need to happen, you know, like, like he was saying, whether that should be, be straightened out or, or created as a T. Um, Holiday City is going through a Wasatch Boulevard master plan of their own this summer. We've um expressed interest in being involved in that as it relates to this area. To make sure that the, the long, long-term approach here is as safe as it can be. But um, this, this solution has been vetted for this project and its impact on the area. The levels of service, the queue times, the, the site distance, everything seems to work um, uh, very well. So this is adequate to handle this project, and then we'll look at that moving forward into the future. Uh, I've got a lot more detail, but I'm going to stop there as a general overview, um, I will mention, we received. Two written comments for this item. That uh, I will disperse to the council after the meeting, one is from uh Lo- Lori Coda Dad. And one is from Lindsay uh like him. So I will send those to the mayor and council after this meeting, they'll become part of the public record.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate that once again, and uh, it's a, it's an important project and we appreciate the public comment. So at this time, we will open up uh, public comment period. Paula, do you have anybody who would like to comment on the gravel pit development?
Yes, sir, I have Lori um, Coda Dad.
Welcome Lori, appreciate uh your attendance and willing to comment.
Thank you for having me, and if it's okay, I would, I've, since I'm here, I would just like to read my comments into your. Meeting instead of having Mike um forward that on to you. Okay, and before I start, I'm, I just want to say that I listened to your work session as well. And um, I'm very happy that you're looking at the traffic flow. Um, I think that um it will work out a lot better than what was proposed last time. But it also makes some of my comments a little bit less relevant, but I'd still like to read them into your minutes.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I've lived on Canyon Crest Drive back in Gun Club Road in Canyon Cove for the past twenty-two years. When I bought my house, I understood there would eventually be a development in the gravel pit, which I've always been fine with. I think it will be an improvement to what is currently there. However, I have a few concerns that I've voiced throughout the process that I don't feel have been addressed by the developer in a satisfactory manner. And this is a recreational corridor for the entire east side between Croods and Big Cottonwood Canyons and beyond. The traffic flow will not only affect Canyon Cove, but also the many people who use the area to recreate. There are bikers, runners, hikers and skiers who use this road frequently. I think the current traffic pattern is the worst one proposed by far. I'm turning off SR one ninety and immediately stopping at a stop sign heading east is not a good idea. My proposal would actually be to have two turning lanes going from SR one ninety. To Wasatch so that one flows into the new development and the other continues north onto Wasatch. I still believe the main access should be the current one on SR one ninety. For the be- benefit of the people who recreate and live on and above Wasatch. I am concerned about the height of the condominium and the direct impact that it will have on Canyon Cove. I'm not certain the council has seen the project from the different viewpoints in Canyon Cove. At most meetings, um, you are shown the viewpoint from properties to the south and to the west. At the April sixth meeting, the developer was asked if this building was above the Gun Club Road level. It definitely is, and that was not portrayed correctly during that meeting. This building um has such, has much more impact on holiday residents to the north than it does on Cottonwood Heights residents. Perhaps that is why the developer focuses on how it will impact Cottonwood Heights. As neighboring cities, we should work together for the common good. I'm also concerned about the mountains of dirt that have been dumped on the old Gun Club site and surrounding property. There's a history of slides in that area, and I fear that the current hills have the potential to slide into this new development. I hope that this um has been researched thoroughly. And I believe that the night sky issue has been resolved, it appears that there will be a good lighting plan for the development. And I believe in the public process and have participated many times in Cottonwood Heights and Holiday. I'm frustrated that the developer has not taken the concerns of Canyon Cove residents more seriously. I hope that the city council will take our issues seriously. And make this the best project possible for the developer, Cottonwood Heights, Holiday. And all of those who use this area for recreation and pleasure, thank you.
Thank you Lori, and thank you for your continued participation and, and truly, we do want to be a, a good neighbor with Holiday, and that's why we've. Now with them many times, we'll continue to meet with them, Paula, anyone else?
Ken Gardner.
Welcome back, Ken.
Hi, just one other thing I forgot to mention, um, with that many new residents uh in the tower. Uh, I would highly encourage, encourage the developer. To put in EV charging stations in the parking garage and in the retail spaces. Uh, this is a huge development in my industry. And uh, we're expecting, you know, thirty to thirty-five percent sales by twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-five, that's not that far off. And uh, Hawaii and California actually have. Uh, laws that have people who uh rent from apartments and townhomes that have a right to plug in. And it will actually encourage more environmental action to have those EV charging stations, so I would encourage that. Council to consider that.
Good point, thank you. Paula, someone else?
Sorry, Mayor, uh, no, no one else, thank you.
All right, uh, any final comments from staff on that, I just want to maybe give Mike a chance to. Show us what's coming next regarding gravel pit, um. I understand, you, you talked about we got sleds we'll still be dealing with and sensitive lands and the. Ecological issues and uh, I'll just be honest, I used to have concern on the height of the condominiums personally, but uh.
Mayor, may, may I just make a comment?
Sure.
Just procedurally, um, and I think Mike had indicated this, but we would just continue the public hearing to the next meeting. If that's what the council wants to do.
What does that mean?
We just continue public comment at the next meeting.
When we sent out notice, we sent it out, we didn't know how many, um, how much interest there would be in sharing public comments, so we, we noticed for here. For comments tonight and in two weeks at the next meeting.
Okay, so public comment, but then. This will still be on the agenda going forward as well.
Yeah, so the plan next week, um, you know, we're, we're starting to assemble kind of final. Project documents and are happy to meet and talk with any council members that still have specific concerns or areas uh that they need clarification on. But we're going to start assembling that, that full um. Decision package and then, yeah, you're right, at the next meeting, we're going to spend a lot of time in the work session. Summarizing the sensitive lands process we've gone through to date and um, how that will look as the project moves forward.
Yeah. I appreciate that clarification, but just want to state that, and I've said this when we created the ordinance originally with uh PDD that. Height is still a question to me from what I've dealt with in uh Cottonwood Corporate, but just want that for the record, all right, uh.
Add one, add one request, Mayor, that may help you in your concern as well. Um, uh, I know it's not a requirement, uh, Mike, but perhaps we could ask. If they would actually construct a KMZ file that we could drop into Google Earth. That has the massing and heights of those buildings. So that uh, we can look at it from various angles that we choose as opposed to be given renderings. Uh, I know that would help me significantly if I could be looking around and driving down the road. I don't think that's a terribly expensive ask, but it would help. Me significantly in seeing how the massing worked.
Sure, um, I, I think they're listening, but I'll also pass along that request.
Yeah. Thanks Scott. Thank you Mike for your effort, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, didn't mean to talk or read, that's one thing that I noticed in at least the rendering we saw, it didn't look like the hill. Uh, it looked like the hill was way far away from that building, you know, as far as the. The actual angle, I, I think anything like that would help us. Kind of get a feel for that, a, a little bit more graphic because.
Yeah.
It's difficult to see it from the two angles we're looking at, and.
Yeah.
It looked to me like in the one angle, it didn't look correct, it looked like the hill is cut away much steeper behind that building.
Well, then the view, the view from the old mill itself, looking up, it seems to be. I don't know, uh, substantially higher than anything and sticks out, so. Just concerned, I, I remember Scott, remember when we talked about height, when we created PDD and we put a limit that gives us an opportunity to. Evaluate and justify and, and look at that particularly uh, in any way we feel we need to, so. My thoughts. Okay. Staff quarterly reports, uh. If it's okay with the council, I'm going to flip these and uh. I think Riley, who's dressed casually, is traveling somewhere, so let you out here, come in early, so.
He's out, he's out on wildland duty, it looks like.
I will.
Yeah, so let uh, uh Riley go first and talk about uh UFA and fireworks restrictions, and then we'll. Do monthly financial after that, so Riley, go ahead.
Awesome, uh, thank you, Mayor, and uh council members in attendance. I'm actually in a class out in Virginia for some uh. Fire executive development, so it's been pretty unique experience, so. Um, with a bunch of other fire chiefs or soon-to-be chiefs from around the country, so it's been a pretty. Pretty neat training to be able to attend, so thanks for uh allowing me a little flexibility there. Um, so what I have for tonight is both the quarterly report for the first quarter of this year. And then a brief just overview of the firework restrictions that we've looked at. That we'd like to recommend to the council um for consideration. Um, so I'll get this started here. So again, this quarterly report will cover January one to March thirty-first of this year. As you can see, Cottonwood Heights, five hundred nine calls over that quarter. So those five hundred nine, a hundred and fifty-nine are what we consider emergent or a. A lights and siren, nine-one-one uh immediate response where somebody has a significant medical incident or a fire, something that's pretty. Pretty important for us to get there quickly, so that makes up about thirty percent of our calls, um, thirty-one. If you kind of review the chart, just looking at the last few months, so starting with the yellow, that'd be twenty-eighteen. To the dark, which is twenty-twenty-one, we're kind of trending about the same. Uh, nothing too significant stands out as far as any big jumps. Um, we'll actually talk about this in a minute, where, where our responses have actually benefited the city over the last, last few months, so. Um, our top fire dispatches, so if we're looking at just fire calls. Um, relatively slow, which is what we do like to see for our citizens, so four structure fires. Uh, doesn't necessarily mean to get them working incidents, but four calls that involve some kind of fire within a, a livable property. Or commercial property, and then uh, two vehicle fires. Medical calls, sick people, so sick calls are twenty-four. Not sure if those are COVID-related or not, I could pull those statistics, but. What we're seeing here is again, kind of common for what we've seen over the last few quarters in Cottonwood Heights. Sick individuals and falls, and then unknown problems are when we get dispatched, we're just not quite sure. What we might be walking into as far as the dispatcher wasn't able to ascertain what's going on. I'm sorry, crews will determine that once they get there. Um, and then just our other most common dispatches that aren't related to EMS or fire, but public service calls, which would be unlocking the door. Or checking the smoke detector or something pretty simple. Um, we do respond on just malfunctions, which could be just a false alarm. Which those, those second to system and detector malfunctions and unintentional system. Or detector activations, those are often just false alarms where the uh pole station might have been activated. Or an alarm was just accidentally triggered. A couple of small leaks and then weather-related issues, um, which are, you know, probably to be expected during that winter time. One thing that we kind of like to share here, which is pretty important for this quarter, is. Cottonwood Heights units, so one-ten and one-sixteen are covering the majority of the calls that happen within Cottonwood Heights, so these will be all the incoming. Uh, units, so you can see Midvale, so one-twenty-six, which is this down the street on Fort Union. Uh, most often, they're going to probably provide an ambulance. Um, because that's where one of our ambulances is also located, if uh, if one at one-ten is out. But the good news here is what we found is that our units in Cottonwood Heights are covering the majority of the calls and we're importing. Or receiving less services from the fire district, so from UFSA where Ward Midvale is. So actually led to a drop in the, in the fee. For Cottonwood Heights, which is pretty awesome, not a huge drop, but there is about a one percent difference, which is still good, I'd rather see a, a decline there than an increase, so that's.
Especially, especially after last year where it was just the opposite, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm happy to see that, where we did have that slight increase last year. And going back down this year, and, and that does mean those units are staying. Or getting back into service much quicker if they're out of service and are picking up the calls that are occurring in Cottonwood Heights, so. As far as the service delivery thing goes, that, that's exactly what we want to see happening, so that, that's good news. Okay, so for this, we, we ran into a very similar challenge that law enforcement did throughout the valley. All, all fire, re- all fire departments are experiencing this too, the fact is, our call processing time. For some reason saw a significant increase i- in the, the number. So what we're seeing, well, on average, you were seeing like a one to two-minute processing time. Being pushed into six to eight minutes, and we even had one, a handful of calls that were actually showing twelve hours of processing time. Um, when we dug into that, what we discovered was because Vec is still using two different CAD systems. Some of the calls that were coming in were actually coming into the old system that two police departments are still using. And when the dispatcher would move them over to fire or put them into our new system versus the term. Those calls would remain open, even though they got moved, and so they're counting against our data. And so what we found is our response times were increasing significantly for the data. Even though the resources were still responding as expected, and so it's, it's a breakdown somewhat of the way the data is being interpreted. With our dispatch system. What we did here is we removed the call processing time, so basically now when we get the call to arrival. Um, these are our numbers, so we're pretty happy with that, five minutes, fifty-two seconds. Um, that's our travel time, so basically when the tones go off from the station, the crew getting to the apparatus. And arriving at the actual incident, so. So that's, that's good, the majority of our calls are those fifty, fifty percent towers, so those emergence. We're getting two and six minutes or less. Um, so we're going to continue to work with dispatch, this call processing thing is important to us. Uh, we do want to make sure that there's not a hangup. In actually processing the call and being to our, our resources. And so it's, it was a pretty big deal, we saw this pick up, or we saw this number increase back in January. And we dug into it, and it looks like everything started about that timeframe, calls up through November. And then in summer, we're accurate, but once we hit that second half of December, January, we noticed our. Call times had this really high number that didn't seem to depict what was actually happening, so. I don't know if there's any questions on that, but we are working closely with Vec and we're working closely with some of our data management. That pulls out that stuff to verify that we are still responding. As quickly as possible, and dispatch is working pretty hard on getting that sorted out, this is definitely more of a technological glitch. And some training with the dispatcher is more than I think it is anything else, so.
I think we have the same challenge with police we've talked about, right Robbie?
Yes, so. And this is across the valley, this isn't just us. And this is across the valley. This isn't just us. This has been happening with all the resources going through Vec. Another challenge too is just the dual dispatch centers between Salt Lake City and Vec. That's also created a few hiccups and just some challenges that add to the difficulty in solving the problem. So we're working on that and hopefully have a resolution here soon. So, oh, you know, that map, that map does not look right. Is it coming across on you guys' screen? They're just showing those weird symbols.
Well, this one is.
Let me see if I can pull up these other maps real fast. These ones aren't looking right to me. Give me just one second here. I can grab these out of just want to make sure we can kind of look at those real fast as well. All right, so map wise, I know there's some interest always in reviewing these. I can pull it up on Adobe so everyone can kind of see that. So again, pretty good breakdown as far as the calls go. You'll see just kind of where we're typically busy on the west side of Conwood Heights and everything's still spread out. And I'm not seeing anything too out of ordinary there. Then the heat map does the same thing, high density, more population, you know, denser living conditions. So but based off of the quarterly report, we're not seeing a whole lot. Again, that stands out as far as any significant concerns go. So I don't know if there's any questions on that. More than happy to answer anything as far as the last three months data goes.
Riley, I do have one question on one of the charts.
Yes.
Confused when you were talking about the different stations and the percentages showing them which ones are local and which not. One, station one ten said like sixteen percent.
Let me pull that up there.
I just want, yeah, this one here. Like one sixteen, I'm sorry, on Wasatch says fifteen point eight. Is that the total percent that?
Because one sixteen is traditionally a little bit slower. I think that's showing that they're responding on sixteen percent of the calls.
For our city.
Yep, where one ten is picking up the majority of them. So those two together account about eighty percent of the calls.
But it's less than Midvale.
And that's probably because of the ambulance. And I think the ambulance alone coming in from the that station is increasing that number. And it is only a looks like nine calls different there.
Yeah.
Difference. My guess, I could look into it further and get some more information, is that's probably largely the ambulance coming in.
Would, would I be correct in assuming, probably not, because I don't get that as the gravel pit, as you've heard, because you've told me it's fully developed, that one sixteen would be one of the primary responders to that new development?
Yeah, the way it looks right now, one sixteen is definitely, that should be in their first scenario. I'd have to look at the zone, how that's set up, or that would end up being one sixteen is more than likely.
Now, that would be important, just as a side note. And also as the city going forward looks at the possibility of that fourth firefighter at that station, as the gravel pit is built out, that becomes major impact on our public safety, both fire and police.
And we'll continue to monitor that and make sure we're working and ensuring that we have the right zone set up for that. One thing to point out too, you see we have nine hundred and eight units, about five hundred and ten or so calls. It's important to remember too, that most calls get multiple units, right? So any call that's medical is going to have two units. So that's why you're going to see a larger number there because this is counting all the units, not the calls. And you'll notice here at one twenty six and one sixteen in Conwood Heights. I think a lot of those at one fifty three from Midvale is going to be largely the ambulance supporting fire, either one sixteen or one ten. So when that ambulance is busy. So I think a lot of these that you're going to see are all ambulance. You know, holiday, you're probably getting the engine on a structure fire. One on one is more likely to be ambulance. And so a lot of times, you know, no freaks, so that one oh six would be an ambulance more than likely. Unless there's a structure fire, we call them multiple engines and ladders. So, so the nine oh eight looks confusing compared to the five hundred and ten calls. That's because, like I said, most of our calls will require a double unit response or more depending on what it is. All right.
Thank you. What time is it where you are?
Right now it's ten ten.
Oh. You've got to get to bed.
They're just getting started out here, so.
No, you're going to bed. You got early morning.
That's true. I am going to bed after this. It's been a long, long week.
All right, any questions? Go ahead, Riley.
No, go ahead. That's to ask just questions if there's anything.
No, any questions and we'll choose Riley so he can get sleep because he's back in Virginia.
I do have the fireworks.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right. We talked about it. I've seen that correspondence, yeah. Go ahead, Riley.
Yeah, I'll pull that up too. This one. I do have the map that was sent by Melissa. What I wanted to share is does everyone see the map?
Yep.
Okay, so what we have here, there's two areas. There's actually a third that I'd like to recommend that came up after the map was produced after talking to some residents. I'm going to start with kind of what I hope is the easy one here first. Let's see here. Of course, this isn't going to so this first one that I want to show you here is so right here we have this yellow box. This is right off of Creek Road. It sits in between, so you got Union Park. And then we've got Michelle. I think it's Michelle Way and we got River View. So this is Hilton Court. Let's see if I can zoom in a little closer even on that one. So right here we have Hilton Court. And what this is, is actually a big parcel of private property. It's probably about three to four acres right here. The concern was just with the amount of open space there and the homes surrounding it. The resident would like this to be considered restricted area or have restrictions placed in there. These ones are really up to the city. Being that's private property and just the surrounding area. I, I definitely can support something like that. There's definitely some concern there, but on the other hand, it also starts getting into, you know, areas that may not necessarily be, you know, managed by the city on that level. It's not seen properly. And so that's one that will definitely need to be considered. I can support it, but definitely that would be more of a council discussion, I think, amongst you and how you want to handle that one.
From an enforcement perspective, if that law already is posted, no fireworks allowed, that's perfectly legal and enforceable, is it not?
I believe so. And that'd be PD for sure as far as our partnership with them. But yeah, a lot of times we, if it was posted, yeah. And so this is what it looks like. Let's see here. Let's see if I can, I'm sure I'm showing the right thing here. So it's this area right here. So you got Creek Roads and then this is what it looks like. This is a bigger piece of property between, basically here's Michelle Way, Mouse, and then Riverwood Drive. So this is an area in question that they've been asked to restrict. I'll show you the other ones real quick. These ones to me are a little more straightforward. Sorry about bouncing back and forth here. This next one is one that I can get behind a hundred percent. I think this one's pretty important. Right between Wasatch Boulevard here on the east side and then Danish here. You got Creek Road, which is up here just a little ways. And then the city boundary. This right here is a pretty good mixture of some homes and then some open space. Just a weird donut shape right there. It's just a weird hole between two restricted areas. This definitely came across to me as more of a surgical approach initially of trying to, trying not to be over aggressive with the restrictions. But after looking at this, I feel really comfortable with recommending this one. I think it's still a pretty high risk area. There's a lot of open space mixing with the homes. Definitely can reconsider this in the future. I know Councilman Bracken shared one of those with us as well. I'd like to reconsider these become more developed. But this one, I would highly suggest that we do. Then the other one that came in, it's right here off of Brighton Point. Let's see if I can zoom in once. So I had a concern citizen call me. They were kind of representing the neighborhood at large. They'd talked to quite a few people who live in there. And basically right here, I know this is kind of a small, let me see if I can pull up this one actually. Hold on a second. This one right here, I have a little more confidence in suggesting, so based off of this map. This is an area that we've had past significant concerns with you know, in previous years. The resident who brought this to my attention lives off of Fieldstone Circle. I don't know if we want to be as aggressive as going that far to the south. My recommendation would be one of two things, looking at this. We've really only restricted the ravine or the drainage or the homes on either side are still in that open area, right? My suggestion on this one would be to go down to Lee's Brighton Point and connect that over here to Enchanted View or Enchanted Hills down to Country Hollow, but that'd be a little more aggressive. This was not on the map presented to the council this came in afterwards. But being very familiar with this area and the concerns of the residents, and I do think it's worth considering. Again, this is in Christine's area, so I'm not sure her feedback would be on this one. But those would be my recommendations for this year. I'd probably prioritize the one between Danish and Wasatch. This one would be an equal priority in my mind, and then the Hilton Court one would definitely have to be more of a discussion held amongst.
Riley, do all of these meet, do all of these meet the criteria?
They, so that's where it gets a little tricky as well, so.
Yeah, because Brighton Point, I mean, more the merrier for me personally, based upon what we've been through historically, but again, we have set criteria. We need to be assured that it meets the criteria.
It needs to be within the urban interface area is one of the criterias where you have wildland hitting the homes. The next thing is a significant fire history. We don't have number two, there just hasn't been other than the one that happened over on that cemetery property several years ago. We actually haven't had too many significant fires in here. And I can pull the data on that, but it's very few just from my experience working out here. But we do have the backing with this one and the one off of Wasatch of kind of open space interface areas. I feel it's loose. I mean, we're really, we're really stretching it on those, I think, but again, with the drought conditions, with the potential unforeseen, but highly predicted and probably reliable forecasting. They are expecting those drought like conditions. And I feel like I haven't over, you know, being a bunch of caution, but based off of forecasted conditions in July and being in proximity to open space, I feel there's enough justification to do these two. The one off of Hilton, based off of those standards, is in my opinion, maybe a bit of a stretch. I just don't know if it meets those criteria. So that'd be my, my recommendation on that. The statute, it's fifteen A two oh two five. And so, you know, you know, attorney may want to look into that, but I feel pretty comfortable with these recommendations based off of that, that we'd be covering our bases, so. And there are a lot of other cities who have taken completely aggressive approaches.
Exactly.
Or the city council, even though it's well outside of the statute, the councils have chosen to be a little more aggressive. I that's typically not my approach. I want to do what's best for the community, best for, you know, the citizens in these areas. I know it's probably not always popular. But these are high risk areas that on the Fourth of July and the twenty fourth and in other situations have given us trouble in the past as far as access and getting in there. And, and where the fires typically start, they're not, it's not like you can just pull a hose to it and put them out. These are kind of challenging areas in many aspects. And so just out of safety for the public and the first responders, I definitely can get behind these ones, so.
What's the timeframe of finalizing the map?
They like to have them by May first to the county. There's a little bit of flexibility there. So I know we're, I mean, we're close. We got about ten days or so, but typically by May first, the county likes to do that. And then by June one, they try to have them in place, so.
Well, me personally, I'm supportive of your recommendations. I'd rather take a more aggressive approach than more passive. Council members, questions, comments?
I just, go ahead, Scott.
Going toward a Brighton Point and whatever it was that, that one, I think that's fairly easy. It's a nice, easy to define point. And the part south in the Danish road area, there is a lot of undeveloped wildland type stuff that's hard to get into. Those two are easy. I think I'd agree with you on those. Certainly say, you know, if you need to put that on the map before the first, then do it.
Yep. I want to thank, personally thank Riley and Chief Officer Brenneman who they're able to meet with us about fire mitigation on, from Crestwood going east. We had, were able to meet with a number of our homeowners association and then going to the west at Creek, I'm sorry, Crestwood Park. And I guess they're able to get some help from the wildlands. Is that right, Riley? To be able to help us. The one thing about fire, it burns uphill very quickly. And there's quite a bit of fuel on that, that hill. And we've had, traditionally, we talked about the fires that we've had in the past, what we can do to mitigate some of those problems. And I really thank both Officer Brenneman and Riley for doing what they've done to to kind of tackle this before we have an issue. We know that this year is going to be drier than the many we've had and we've had issues in the past. But thanks so much for that, Riley. I appreciate it. And we're going to do everything we can to also chip in to help on that.
Yeah, thank you. And we will make our wildland division resources available as it can be. Quite a bit of coordination we've been doing in collaboration with Salt Lake County Parks to work in Crestwood, in that Crestwood area. And we've done that in the past. We've had some high success in there. It's certainly a problem area for us as well as the city as far as fires go. And so we'll closely monitor that, work with that. And I'd say with Officer Brenneman and his support and just the local connections, we're going to keep working on that throughout the throughout the, I know I got it tied along, but throughout the next few few weeks, we'll have some good plans in place.
Great. A question for Robbie. Robbie, when you look at that map and you've been out and involved all the fire stuff, any questions, concerns, suggestions?
What he's proposing is pretty consistent with what we've done in similar years. So I think it's a, it's a excellent map and proposition and I would make no changes.
Yeah. Okay, Riley, I think you've got our consensus to support those suggestions you've made and encourage you to go ahead.
All right, we'll get that taken care of. Thank you.
I appreciate it. And hopefully we have a good fire year. We've been lucky last couples. Yeah. All right, thank you, Ryan. We'll excuse you and you can go to bed. Yeah. Scott, monthly financial report. Hopefully it's as as good as it has been.
Yes, it is. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So what you're looking at here, we always like to start with our sales taxes because sales taxes kind of tells the the overall story of kind of how the overall economy is going. We always have pockets that do do their own little things, but overall in our economy, we're seeing things very well. You can see that that this is through January. We did not receive any sales tax information today, so either tomorrow or the next day, we should receive some additional sales tax information. But through January's collections, we have received four million, four hundred and twenty nine thousand. And so if you see uh, four million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and so if you see this dark blue bar here in prior years, this is where we were. See, it's definite growth over the prior years. We're actually about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars ahead of where we were last year, which was a record year for us. If you took that four hundred and fifty-nine thousand and you made the assumption that we were going to collect exactly what we did in prior years for February through June, we would actually land the year at one million seven, one million, or sorry, seven million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So nearly seven point two million dollars, uh, here in sales taxes. So we're really on a banner year, and again, our, our budget really isn't set where we would probably prefer it to be. Um, probably adding at least a million to the budget, or maybe a million, two hundred and fifty thousand is probably more likely where we'd do it. We don't really need to change that. Uh, because there, it doesn't have a, excuse me, a negative impact on us to exceed that. Um, but I think we're probably easily, from a forecasting standpoint, going to be about seven point two million dollars in collections, and we'll continue to monitor that, and if we still continue to get high, uh, returns in terms of our results, then we'll, we'll update you on that as we go forward.
So is that extra revenue primarily because of Tim Tingey and yourself as financial manager for the city?
It is. It's very directly related to that. Um, I wish I could take credit for that, but no, uh, it's probably mostly related uh, to a lot of people, uh, staying home and not, not traveling and doing a lot of, of, uh, home improvements. A lot of grocery purchases, um, less going out to, to restaurants and making those grocery purchases, and then also online purchasing. That's probably the big drivers in, in most of this that you're seeing. Any other questions on sales tax?
No, good numbers.
And so this is our county option transportation sales tax. So this is a special tax that was implemented. Uh, last year was our first year receiving it. Last year, we received five hundred and eighty-six thousand. Um, this year, we're about forty-two thousand dollars ahead of last year. Um, so we're, we're track transitioning, uh, well in this. This doesn't follow exactly along the lines with, uh, the other sales tax because we don't share in the same way. Uh, sales tax is shared fifty percent based on point of sale and fifty percent based on um, statewide population. So this is shared a little bit differently, and not every community participates in this county options, uh, transportation sales tax. Um, it's, it's contained within Salt Lake County, so the, the distribution's slightly different. However, we are tracking well on this. We've got a budget of six hundred thousand. If I was going to make a guess on this one, I would say we would probably land maybe six hundred and twenty-five thousand as we go through, uh, towards the end of the year on this. And again, this is through, uh, collections through the month of January. Um, this slide shows our municipal energy tax, so this is taxes that are applied to both uh, uh, electricity and gas sales within the city. Uh, natural gas, not, not, uh, gas for the motor vehicles, but natural gas. So you can see that the trend over several years has been slight declines, and a lot of this happens as we become more efficient in our use of those, uh, those, um, energies. We, we, the, the base drops, and therefore the revenues on the tax drops as well. Um, if you look at where we are at this point, which is through February collections, we're about thirty-four thousand dollars ahead of the prior year's collections at the same period. Um, and so, um, it's, it's kind of hard to say that we're going to be much different, uh, than last year. We might be slightly ahead of last year, which is going to be a little ahead of what our budget is, because our budget is a million nine fifty. Our collections last year were a million nine eighty-seven. Um, we would probably finish this one near two million dollars if I was guessing right now. A lot of it is also weather-based. If it gets either really cold or really hot, it impacts the use of energy. But while we remain more moderate in our temperature, um, the use of those, uh, energies is more moderate. So. The cable franchise tax, um, this has also been on slight declines over the past several years. Uh, three hundred and thirty-five thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, then a little bit of flattening, um, last year at three hundred and twenty-three thousand. If you look at where we are at halfway through the year, these, these collections come in about quarterly, um, and they're a little bit behind. We haven't yet received our, our third quarter, uh, collections on this, and so um, I don't know exactly where that's going to be, but at halfway through the year, we're about four thousand behind what we collected in our past fiscal year. Um, so based on our budget of three hundred and ten thousand, um, I would guess that we would probably be somewhere between three fifteen and three twenty, uh, for a guesstimation on that uh, in terms of where we would land, but our budget's not far off, uh, from where I expect that we'll actually collect for this source. Uh, Class C road funds. Now, this is directly related to fuel purchases. Um, as the, as the tax on a per gallon basis is applied, um, this tax comes in, so as, as, as as gallons of fuel go up, we receive more money. As gallons of fuel go down, we receive less money. So again, as cars become more efficient and as the population grows out predominantly in, in the western side and the southern side of the valley, we see some erosion of this, uh, this revenue. Last year, it actually went up a little bit. Um, and you can see that we were tracking high on this through many of the months uh, early in, in the, in the timeframe. This year, we were actually tracking a little bit behind. As we started the year, we, there were, a lot of people weren't traveling a lot as they were contemplating what to do, uh, as we didn't know what was happening with COVID. We're seeing that come up a little bit now. However, we are behind last year's collections, about forty-seven thousand, and this is through ten periods, and so based on this, if you applied that roughly fifty thousand less here on the million two, or million two hundred and ninety thousand collected last year, we would be somewhere in the million, two hundred and forty thousand dollar range. Um, so we're going to be a little bit better than what we have budgeted, but not a ton. Um, it's going to be, depend a little bit on, um, how travel's going right now. My personal opinion on that, without seeing any real data, is that we're probably traveling about normal now. Um, so I'm not anticipating that we're going to fall behind that, but we'll probably be in the million two thirty to million two fifty range, um, as we land that, this, um, collection through the end of the year.
Scott, would fuel prices also change those numbers possibly?
They, they don't because it's a, it's a cents per gallon, uh, thing, so fuel prices don't have any real effect unless fuel prices change consumers' attitudes towards use.
That, that's what I meant, just the attitude to, to use.
Yeah, so if, if we, we are seeing, uh, gas prices be up a little bit more now than they have been, say, you know, even a couple of months ago, so obviously, as, as gas prices go higher, it could curb some people's um, either ability to or intention to use fuel in some way, shape, or form. Um, I don't know that we're seeing that quite yet. Um, I haven't heard any forecasts where people are going in and saying that it's affecting people's behaviors drastically. We'll definitely have to watch that because if gas prices get, you know, obviously really out of control, say four or five dollars a gallon, that will definitely have an effect on this, uh, tax, uh, but I don't, I don't hear anything on that right now.
Scott, have you heard, and maybe Tim knows this, and I should, I don't remember, um, last quarter of the quarter, that fifteen-year commitment? Is that in this budget cycle, or is it the next budget cycle?
The, the quarter of the quarter.
The new, the new, the new one that was just passed this last legislative session.
It's, it's next. It's the next budget cycle.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any more questions on Class C roads? Okay. So moving forward, this is our, um, our general fund expenditures. So the budget, we've done a couple of adjustments. The main adjustment that we've done is uh, we had the capenary budget, which doesn't directly affect the general fund. Uh, and then we also had the, um, mainly, it was mainly predominantly grants and the um, market and merit increases that we incorporated in as adjustments. I think one was in December, if I'm correct, and then the other one was in January, when we actually, uh, did those adjustments. The, the trends in the prior years is, is we've, we've gone up moderately in each of these years. Uh, about two hundred thousand from eighteen to nineteen, about four hundred thousand from sixteen to, or sort of nineteen to twenty. Um, and, and this doesn't always go up linear. It has a lot of depending on a lot of things. If you remember, in this year, we also had um, some expenditures related to, um, the CARES funding, um, as we prepared for, for that, and they were offset by revenues, so looking at an expense growth in the general fund isn't necessarily alarming. Um, because it can be offset by revenues, which aren't shown, uh, directly shown on this. Um, for this year, we're sitting at, uh, twelve million, almost five hundred thousand, even at this point in time. That's about eighty-nine thousand dollars ahead of the prior year's spending. So based on the fact of where we are, I think that's pretty good. I know that most of the division directors are doing a very good job at holding their expenditures down as we were trying to, you know, contemplate what was going on. I still anticipate we'll probably be somewhere in a three to four percent under expand basis. That's pretty close. We're, we usually are right around three percent under expand, um, in recent years, and I think that'll continue, maybe push a little bit higher potentially to four percent. But I don't think it'll be drastically higher than that. The other thing is, is the merit and market adjustments that we put in place that started in January are only going to hit the second half of the year. So our second half of the year will be slightly higher spending than the first half of the year as we go through this. And so I would anticipate that we will come, right now, we're tracking a little bit down, uh, possibly, you know, five and a half percent or so below, below where we are. I would guess that that will come up and be a little bit closer to, you know, three to four percent range as we, uh, land this budget, uh, as we progress, you know, to the end of the year. Um, and these slides all kind of correspond to the monthly financials that were sent out about a week and a half ago in the council communications. Um, and so if you, you know, want more details than what I've gone in here, there's much more details in that document, and you can, uh, reference that if you need another copy of that. Um, it's found to, it can be found a couple of places. One is on our city, uh, website. It's where the financial reports and budgets and things are. It's there. And then I can also, uh, arrange to get that emailed out to you if you need one as well.
Just, just another comment. I know in the next sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty days, we'll be receiving, based upon population, uh, uh, well, it's not CARES Act, it's called something else, but we'll receive another, uh, major influx of, uh, funds from the federal government, uh, just as an FYI. Uh, UFA will be requesting for another contribution, uh, like they did on the initial contribution last year, just as an FYI.
Okay, and, and we are, and we are under the impression that we're going to get that. We don't yet have full details on allowable expenditures towards those funds. But we're, um, definitely have our ears open and our eyes open to when those, um, outlines come. Uh, so we're actively looking for that. When we do get those funds, what we'll do is we'll reserve them in our, in our fund balance as a, as a, as a reserved fu- fund, and so it won't be an available for, for use necessarily until we get the details on what we can utilize those funds for, and then we will utilize them accordingly.
Thank you. Any questions of Scott? Obviously, these are great numbers. You know, you think of a year ago where we thought we'd be in where we are. I mean, it's so refreshing, so, thank you. Any comments, questions of Scott or Tim regarding the two budget numbers?
Oh, thank you.
All right, uh, that's the staff quarterly reports. We have then two action items that I need your consideration on this evening. The first one is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen. It's consideration, considering, uh, consenting to the city manager's reappearance. Scott Hendrickson, who I think most of us know, and to Niels Valentiner, who many of us will know, but, uh, to our ARC committee. Tim, any comments on that appointment?
Just recommending approval to your terms.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Our, uh, Architecture Review Commission does a lot of, uh, good work, making sure that developments go in and look the way they should. I'd recommend that we, I'd move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
It's been moved by Councilor Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that, Mayor.
I'm glad you did because.
You're the only other one here.
It's been moved by Councilor Bracken and seconded by Councilor Peterson. Uh, any final comments, questions? Here, I call for the vote, uh, Councilor Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Brackett.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and Councilor Bruce is out of town, so excuse her. Um, and Councilor Michael is also traveling and not able to attend this meeting, so. All right, the next item is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, accepting a request for indemnification. Shane, would you introduce that for us briefly? I know we've discussed it in our work session, so.
Sure, um. The, uh, Governmental Immunity Act of Utah is, uh, is a series of state statutes that, uh, govern, when a governmental entity can claim immunity when it can't. And one portion of the act provides that when, um, employees of a, of a Utah governmental entity are named in a lawsuit and, uh, the actions complained of concern their, uh, actions that are performed arguably within the course and scope of their employment, then the governmental entity is required to, uh, agree to defend and indemnify them. Um, the resolution that is before the council, uh, concerns a situation where a city employee has been named as a counterclaim defendant uh, in a, uh, in a lawsuit concerning insurance coverage. And, uh, uh, so the employee has filed with the city a uh, request for defense and indemnity under the Governmental Immunity Act, claiming that the uh, any liability would be based on the employee's actions within the course and scope of employment. So the council is now required to decide whether or not to grant that request for defense and indemnity. The uh, the resolution provides that the, the city will accept the request with a reservation of rights, which will allow the city to, uh, look at uh, the allegations, the facts that come out, uh, in the lawsuit, and if the city subsequently determines that the, uh, actions were not actually within the course and scope of the employee's, uh, job performance, why, then the city can withdraw the defense and indemnity. Um, this is the, uh, this is the typical approach that is used when city employees are, uh, are named in lawsuits, uh, concerning their, uh, their, their job performance, and, uh, so this is not an an unusual request. This is the same way that, uh, these things are handled in other governmental entities from the state on down through the counties and the various, uh, cities and towns, uh, throughout the state.
Thank you, Shane. Uh, and again, we discussed it somewhat more thoroughly in the work session and on the agenda itself. It, it notes the, you know, Utah Governmental Immunity Act and the state code that, uh, supports what Shane has articulated. Any comments, questions, uh, before we call for a motion?
Um, no, I would just say that I, I appreciate that, uh, explanation. I would just reiterate that, uh, Shane noted that they, they shall grant that if it's requested. Um, that is by statute. Um, we do have the right, the reservation of rights, which I think is appropriate. Um, that is by statute. Um, we do have the right, the the reservation of rights, which I think is appropriate. Um, but so long as a governmental employee is working within their job and their color of authority, um, I think that it's right that they should be um uh indemnified. Uh, to that end, I would move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilman Peterson. Any final comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote, uh, Councilor Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, with a clear understanding. I think we have a moral and ethical responsibility to provide that indemnification as outlined. Um, uh. All right, and Councilmember Bruce and Councilor Michael are out of town, uh, traveling, so uh they will not be voting on this issue. Any, uh. There it is. I knew there was one more item on the agenda. My apologies. That's the consent calendar, which is approval of the city council work session and business meeting minutes for March fourth and April sixth. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Well, I was just gonna ask, uh, Paul, are you, if you're listening, I just want to make sure that that clarification on median that I had brought up in those meetings was made. I'm assuming that it has been.
Yes, it has been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Somehow, in asking that question, my video popped up.
Okay, that's, any other questions, comments regarding the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for uh approval.
I move that we approve, Mayor.
It's removed by Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second?
Uh, I'll second, yes.
This is now seconded by Councilor Bracken, so uh uh, just do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 More importantly, any opposed? The record showed that it was unanimous, so. Okay, any other final comments from the council, things that uh kind of busy night that we've missed or need clarification?
Just wanted to also thank Carlos Cardon for the wonderful work they did on the shakeout. Understand that was.
Oh, that was great.
Much better success. Uh, we have some amazing people that helped try to keep us safe under all conditions between our police force, fire, communications, all that. I I just want to thank all of you for for uh what helps make us safe here in Compton Heights.
Yeah, Carlos and Paul Brenneman, who they were tandem hand in hand, and I understand it was the most effective one we've had yet. And uh, and I think all but maybe two, Robbie, all but maybe two neighborhoods participated, and so, yeah. Excellent.
Well, thank you, but can you go easy on the compliments, because he'll be hitting me up for a race tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, 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 raising with the Subway sandwich or something, and I'll buy.
For some doughnuts, those involved raised dough, so you could go that way.
But they, uh, when I talked with Carlos, I talked to him over the weekend during the the event, and he, again, he really appreciated Paul, so, great. All right, any final comments, questions?
No, I, the weird journey.
Okay, it's moved that we adjourned. Uh, would someone like to second that?
Well, I think I would like to second that.
Tim was gonna, but he's, he's asleep in St. George.
Let the record show that we adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and uh safe travels tomorrow, and Tim, get some sleep, yeah.
Good night, everybody.